Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the voter and the viewer, to learn a little bit more about the candidates that we have here in town and their views on the issues that are important to us. This is all leading up to the general election, which is on Tuesday, November 6. Today's guest is Ronnie Nolan, and he is a candidate for the Franklin County School Board. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I'm so glad that you took the time to stop by this morning.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
I thought maybe we'd start out with you telling us a little bit about yourself and why you have chosen to run for the school board.
Sure. Well, my name is Ronnie Nolan. I am an educator at heart. I've been working in the field of education for about 24 years, all the way from as soon as I got out of college, really focusing my career on education, from higher education services all the way to just general public education throughout my career. So I've had a wide-ranging career in education. I do have a doctorate in education administration from North Carolina State University. I lived in Raleigh, North Carolina, for a little while before moving back home to Kentucky, where I did my studies there. And so for the last 14 years of those 24 years, I've actually worked as director of the Kentucky Educational Collaborative for State Agency Children. It's a state agency program initiated by the General Assembly in 1992, charged with providing educational services for children and youth who are in the care or custody of the Commonwealth. So we have about 83 programs across Kentucky, all across the state, and they range from programs like group homes, like maybe the Methodist Home for Children. All of those programs have schools located on their campuses. And we work with the local school districts in those communities to provide educational services for those kids. Oftentimes, these are a group of students who have been very marginalized, have experienced significant trauma, have been involved with the justice system in some way, many of them. But they still deserve and have a right to a free and appropriate public education. But oftentimes have issues that prevent them from being able to attend a traditional public school environment. So we work with those local school districts to set up schools on their campuses. Most of them have a school on their campus. And I've been working with that organization for quite a number of years to make sure that that population of students in our state have an equitable and appropriate public education for them.
That's right.
So that's kind of my work. And that really has been my passion, is working with students who have been marginalized, students who many of us would identify traditionally as at-risk students, students who are at risk of dropping out of school, or who have academic competency issues and have not been as successful in a traditional educational setting. So that's really been my passion of work for most of my professional life. I have a beautiful family. I have a loving family who's supportive of this endeavor. And so I also have a beautiful little girl who's going to be starting school next year. And so she'll be going to Hearn Elementary in our district next year, and we're really excited about that. And I think as we started talking about kind of the education program here in Franklin County and why I wanted to get involved at this level, she really is kind of the driving force for that. But I recognize that it's not just about my daughter, who I'll just, you know, is gifted and beautiful and smart in every way. But it really is about every kid, because my daughter and will have opportunities that I think other kids in our district deserve. And that's really why I wanted to run for Franklin County School Board.
That's a great reason.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, that's why a lot of people who decide to run for that would hope that that's the reason.
Yeah.
So what exactly are the responsibilities of a school board member?
Sure. Well, so a lot of folks kind of think that a school board member has direct oversight of daily management of operations in a district. And that really is not the role of what a school board member does. We really are providing guidance to the district in long-range strategic planning. We work with the superintendent and district leadership to make sure that we have a, that we're setting appropriate goals, that we are managing the district in a responsible way. We have responsibility for budget allocation, for taxing, for all of those kind of very large umbrella issues. And so those really, I think, set the tone for what the district puts as priorities and how we, how we make commitments to certain groups of students, or all students, or how we do that. And so I think the role of a school board member in that sense is kind of a very kind of high-level umbrella kind of view of the, of the district. And a lot, you know, I get a lot of questions about, you know, how are particular personnel issues or things like that, which a school board typically is not involved in those kinds of decisions and that kind of daily management of a district. That really is the responsibility of the superintendent and of the district leadership. So what I think we're charged with primarily, when I look at that, in addition to the financial part, is getting the right people in the right places. And I think we have great leadership within our district now. I mean, Dr. Kopp is wonderful, and so we have, he's relatively new to our district. And so what I see is this, is that the previous board, the board who's there now, many of them will continue on as board members, have done a great job in establishing a district-level leadership that is committed to, I think, the right causes within Franklin County. And so I see a school board member as really supporting that and providing that district leadership with the resources they need to implement the strategic plan that I think we have as a board and as a community.
Well, that sounds like a lot of responsibility to me.
It is a lot of responsibility, because there are a lot of students who are relying on that, right? And our community as a whole is relying on having people who are able to have a vision for what Franklin County Public Schools can be, and then empowering the right people to carry out that vision.
So with those responsibilities, in addition to the experience that you have, what characteristics do you feel that you have that prepare you for that responsibility?
Sure. So I think part of my work now, and that I've been working in for the last 14 years, is really a collaborative model. My work is all built around collaboration. It is about bringing the right people to the table, the right stakeholders. So right now, we have a board of directors that oversees our work, and it is made up of school district superintendents from across the state, school administrators and teachers from across the state. We have Department of Juvenile Justice represented, Community-Based Services, Department of Education, and all of those different folks coming together to really, in my particular work, is talking about what is in the best interest of the holistic development of a child. How do we meet all of the needs from all of the different sides? And so I've been very fortunate to have, have great partnerships with all of those folks and pulling them together to talk about in that way. And so as I look for, toward this experience of the local school board, I think part of what we really need to do is get the right people at the table and to make sure that we're having conversations with all of the different stakeholders about how we meet, meet the needs of our kids. So I think that's a skill that I bring to it and that any school board member should be bringing to the table, is we want to empower our administrators, our teachers, our students, and our parents, and community members, who all have a stake in, in our local school district. A lot of folks will say, "Well, I don't have kids in, in public schools, so this maybe isn't as important to me." But public schools in Franklin County, I mean, we are the economic driver for this entire community. So if we want to have a flourishing economic program in Franklin County, if we want to develop jobs here, if we want to bring new, new jobs, if we want even our cashiers at Kroger to be able to correctly check, give us our change back, all of those things are impacted by the public school system. So we all have a vested interest in making sure that our students are successful. And so I really think that what I've excelled at is bringing those people together. And that's what I hope to do as a school board member, is really have that community engagement and to have conversations about how we can do that. As a candidate for school board, I think I've already started trying to do that. I've created a Facebook page. You can find it by looking for Ronnie for School Board. It's very simple. Tap in Ronnie for School Board, and you'll find my Facebook page. And on that, I've created and outlined a lot of positions around particular things that are going on in our schools. But I've also engaged with our community and said, "What are the issues that are going on that we need to be aware of, and how do we address that?" So I think that's a first step in bringing folks together, to let's talk about our big picture. Let's talk about strategically what we want to accomplish as a school district, and then let's put into place our processes for making that happen. So I think that's probably part of what I bring to the table and what I would like to bring.
Okay, great. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the seat that you're running for inevitably is going to be a new person on the school board.
That's correct. That's correct. Jennifer Grisen Brown, who has been the chair of the Franklin County School Board, has decided not to run for reelection. So the person coming into this will be a new person.
So what are the advantages of having new blood on the board?
Well, I think anytime you have new perspectives. So I'm, I'm, I would think that I'm a new perspective. I'm going to bring in a new perspective to the board. We have a great board already. I'm, you know, I've participated and watched and, and looked at our board for several years and have been really actively engaged as kind of a voyeur or, you know, an outside participant in what the work that's taking place. And so I think we have a very competent board. And what I think I would bring is a different perspective in that. I have a long history working in education and public education, but what I think I also bring is a statewide perspective to that. I've been in 53 school districts. We partner with 53 school districts across Kentucky. So I've seen the full variation of the types of programs and services that can be offered in a public school system. And so I think I bring that to the table, and I can offer a little bit different perspective on how we compare to other districts and what we can learn from other districts. I think one of the things that's so important to me is several years ago, I started what we, in alternative education in the state, what we would call at the time, best practices in alternative education. It has now morphed into alternative programs of distinction that's operated by the Kentucky Department of Education. And that process really invites applicants from across the state to share with us, what are innovative practices that are happening in your district? What are things that are really exceptional, that are moving students forward in academic achievement, that are having some pretty significant impacts on them? So I've been involved in that process for the last 10 years, and I bring that perspective of how do we learn from, from our neighboring districts and also from districts across the state, who are doing some really innovative things in K-12 education that I think we can learn from and adapt here. In education, we always say, "It's not stealing when you take from somebody else." It's really just, you know, you're borrowing and adapting and improving and, and really taking ownership of that, of those processes. And that's what I think the perspective that I can bring to the board as a new member.
Great. So as a member of the board, there are going to be a lot of issues facing the board. So what do you think are the biggest issues facing Franklin County Schools right now?
Sure. Well, I think there are a lot of issues facing all public schools across Kentucky right now. As you know, and as we have all heard, there's been lots of rhetoric out in the public sphere about education in general. It's a very hot topic, not just at our local level, but at our state level and at our national level. And so I think that has some pretty serious implications on the profession of education. We can look all the way down to teacher prep programs at universities and the enrollments in those. I think we have some significant gaps in producing new teachers and the needs that are happening across our state for teachers. And so, you know, part of my work right now is at Eastern Kentucky University, and so I'm in the College of Education there as well. And so I see firsthand the teacher preparation program and am familiar with what's going on there. So I think one of the most critical issues that I've, I've talked about is teacher retention and recruitment. And I think we have to look at how do we recruit the best quality teachers that we can get. In ours county here, we should be getting the best teachers in the entire region and entire state. And so I really think that we need to do, for me, an analysis of not just their pay scale, which I know is low compared to our neighboring districts, but we also have to look at how do we create incentive programs within our schools to retain and recruit the best qualified teachers we can. So I think that's probably one of the first issues that, that we have to deal with. I also think that there's a litany of them, but school safety issues, I think, are on everybody's mind right now. You know, with the tragedy that happened in Marshall County and, and with all of the other things that have happened across the country, I think parents, especially when they send their kids to school, they entrust that they are going to be safe and that they are going to be protected. So I think that's an area that, that we have to work on. Franklin County Public Schools, I think, has done a really good job in developing an initial plan for school safety. They have engaged the right people, and they're having ongoing conversations and trainings around that. But I think that's an area we have to stay committed to. And when I talk about school safety, for me, it's not just a school responsibility, it's a community responsibility. So I think that we have to engage the community in those conversations in a more meaningful way than maybe we have.
Yeah.
So I think teacher recruitment, I think school safety, the other thing I think is really important, and it probably is coming from my background in working in alternative education and working with kids who have been marginalized largely in society because of things that have happened to them or things that they have been involved in, is really around creating trauma-responsive schools. We've heard a lot of talk in the news and in trainings and in teacher circles about trauma-informed care, which really is when we stop saying, "What is wrong with the kid? And why do they, you know, to what has happened to this child that makes them act in a certain way?" And it comes with the understanding that life experiences of our students outside of school really impacts what's happening in school. And so I think we have to start being responsive to that. And not just informed in that we know that those things happen, but we have to move beyond being informed to how do we respond? How do we strategically talk about meeting mental health needs of our kids? And so there are models across the state where they have engaged with their local mental health providers to provide mental health counseling and services in their schools and in their campuses. And I know we do that to some extent here, but I really think that that's a growing area of need. When you talk to educators anywhere across the state or across the country, one of their biggest issues they'll tell you is that the mental health needs of their kids are getting just more extreme and more difficult to handle in a classroom setting.
Sure.
And so I think we have to be responsive to that. And again, as we talk about it, it's not just a school responsibility. I think a lot of folks will say, "The school needs to fix this." And I think what I will say throughout this is that the school is a partner in fixing this, but the school is not the fixer by itself. It takes all of us coming together to talk about what's happening in our community and how we respond to that. And it's about engaging our church community, engaging our schools, engaging civic organizations across the county, all of us talking about those kinds of issues and how we can respond appropriately. So I think those are big issues as well.
Yeah.
And then obviously, I mean, probably, you know, another, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Well, there are a lot of, there's a lot of.
I'll just sit over here.
There's a lot of opportunity, I think, for growth. I mean, and education, I think, and our students are, have a lot of, there's a lot of things that are really on the forefront right now around education. So in addition to that, you know, I think we have to talk about financing of our schools, especially in Franklin County. We, all schools across Kentucky really rely on a solid tax base, right, for their, for their schools.
That's what I was going to ask you about. You talk about all the needs that we have.
Sure.
And hating to be a Debbie Downer, but all of that takes money.
Sure, it does.
And we're at a point right now this year where the Franklin County Fiscal Court, both of the public school districts and our city commission will soon be voting.
Yes.
To increase the tax rates. And can, can you identify ways that the board can identify new revenue streams?
Sure. Well, one of the things that I, that I think is important, and I think as I'm running for school board, I have to be aware that I don't have all the answers.
Yeah.
I am new to this, and I'm going to be a new member on the state board that has four other members who, you know, are experienced and have much deeper depth of knowledge around these issues than I do. So I'll just say that upfront.
Sure.
And I think that I will rely and trust on a lot of their guidance in understanding that initially. But I do think that one of the things that I've advocated for is that we do have to do a review of how are we spending the resources we currently have.
Okay.
And I think that we all do that, right? We all, in our private lives, in our work lives, we all have priorities of things that we would like to do. And we say, "Can we do those kind of things? Can we afford to do that?" And it talks about, and I feel like in our, in our personal actions, we have to look and say, "Can we do that? And how can we do it? And if we do that, what don't we do?" So I think the first thing that I would really ask for is a review of, of where are we spending our funds now? And what does that look like?
Okay.
But I think beyond looking at Franklin County, I think that we have to look and do some benchmarking around that and look at our neighboring districts and say, "How are we comparing in our expenditures and in our revenue to our neighboring districts?" I know just recently in the, in the State Journal, there was an article, I think it was an editorial, that noted that Franklin County Public Schools, I think, is the third highest tax rate in our neighboring counties.
Yeah.
When I looked at that data, I went back and looked for data. I found that we were actually the fourth from the top, and there were several who were lower. There were three, I think, Henry County, Owen County, and Scott County were lower than us for our neighboring counties. But all of the others were a little bit higher than us.
Yeah.
But I think that we have to look to them and say, "How are we, all of these counties, how are they spending their resources and what can we learn from that?"
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, I'm all about making priorities. And so we have to, as a board and with our district leadership, talk about what is our plan for providing educational services in our district? And when you have a plan, that plan drives your decision-making. So I'm very data-driven. I have to be in, in my work. And I think, so we have to look at what are our needs and then how do we prioritize our budget to get there?
Yeah.
None of us have money for everything we want to do, right?
Yeah.
So we have to make priorities, and then we spend accordingly. So that's really what I would advocate for as a new person coming in, is I want to know kind of where we are, and then let's talk about where we want to be and how we get there, and that's where you spend your money.
Okay. Well, our local Economic Development Group tells us that the availability of skilled labor is a major obstacle to recruiting new businesses to this area.
Sure.
So what do you see that our schools can do to help address this issue?
Great. Thank you for that. I absolutely agree. But it is not a, an issue that is specific to Franklin County.
Yeah.
That is a statewide issue that we are, that the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, as well as the local Chamber of Commerce, is working on. And when we talk to recruiters, when they talk to recruiters and businesses across the country, that issue continually comes up. So I want to start by saying it's not something that is just happening in Franklin County, so that all of our viewers and everybody who are out there are not saying, you know, "Everybody else is booming and Franklin County is the one that has this issue," because that's, that's not the reality. We all share that. But what I would say is that part of what I've done in my career and what I think is important is that we have to look at innovative approaches to preparing that workforce. And, you know, there's, there's a discussion, debate in education about what the purpose of education is. Some folks believe that the purpose of education is that we, you know, become more enlightened and we develop critical thinking skills and that we're able to kind of lead ethical lives of purpose and promise and those kind of things. And then there's the other kind of train of thought that says it's really about workforce development.
Practical, yeah.
And the practical skills. I think it has to be a combination of the two. Somebody who can do practical skills but can't think critically about why they're doing those things, they're not going to grow our economy.
Yeah.
And on the other end, somebody who is very philosophical but can't provide any practical skill or application, also not going to do us the kind of good that we need.
Yeah.
So I think it's the combination of that. And so I look, again, at innovative practices in education. And I think we have to start thinking about education delivery different than we have in the past. And what I mean by that is that there are students in our system, who I meet every day, who have very different learning styles, who are very practice-based learning, who are project-based learning, who are into that, kids who learn with their hands. And then we have, you know, gifted kids who are ready for college. You know, they're sophomores in high school and they're ready for college. So I think we have to look at those different kinds of programs in our district. Just recently, with the creation of the technical school and kind of really making that kind of a, a small model of alternative education for kids who need that kind of service to excel, I think is a great first step in expanding the kinds of programs that we can offer. We have kids who just don't learn well in a school with 1,200 kids.
Yeah.
You know, that's just not the environment, and they're, they're just not going to be successful there. So I think we have to look for other opportunities within that structure of how do we create innovative academies within our schools? And so I think that's something we can bring to the table and talk about of how we provide that workforce development, while also meeting those needs of having kids who develop critical thinking skills, who are able to assess a situation and respond appropriately. Those are all kinds of the things that we want. So I look at innovation, and from that, I take, what are we learning from other districts across the state? Because lots of folks are doing this very well. And so we can pull from different experiences and bring those here.
Well, I've toured that Career and Tech Center, and it's fabulous.
Good.
I have a question about a new program that's being implemented, the, the new Coffield High School program. I think they're doing it through the Career Center, and is that, is that for alternative students?
I'm not as familiar with that one.
Okay.
I'm going to be honest, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the new program that's starting. I think as, as a new person coming into this, I have a lot to learn.
Okay.
And I'll be the first to admit that.
Yeah.
I think that there's some growth opportunity there for me. And that's why I really have talked about relying on the expertise of, of current board members to get me up to speed, as somebody new coming in.
Yeah.
Who doesn't have the experience directly in the field within Franklin County.
Okay. Back on the, the workforce thing, another issue of local business is that even when they find skilled workers, is that when they do bring them in, they don't pass a drug test. What can schools do to help address that?
Sure. Well, I think that this goes back to what I was talking about earlier with creating a trauma-responsive school and what that means. And I know that sounds like kind of a lofty terminology, and what does, what does that really mean when you, when you talk about that? I think it's an understanding that there are lots of outside factors that are impacting our kids and kids who have experienced repeated trauma.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean one time. So if a child experiences a death of a family member, that's a one-time, one-time trauma that typically does not have, for most students, lasting impact on them. But repeated trauma in childhood, things like daily exposure to drug and alcohol abuse, parent, one or more parent incarcerated, which, you know, Kentucky has one of the highest incarceration rates of parents in the entire country. So we have lots of kids in our community and across the state who have incarcerated parents. When we look at those kinds of repeated traumas that happen to kids when they are very young and their formative years, when they're, when their brain is really developing at a speed that is much faster than, than as you get older. I mean, when we have those kinds of experiences impacting them, it really changes how they think and how they view the world. And so when I talk about creating trauma-informed schools, it is about creating an environment at school that is able to be responsive to those kinds of experiences and to respond to those, so that we can teach kids in our schools with partnering with our mental health providers, how do you cope appropriately with an environment where those kinds of things are happening, so that you don't repeat those kinds of things?
Right.
And that's really what I'm thinking about when I talk about trauma, trauma-responsive schools, is partnering together so that we can do that. I think that's one step that we can do as a school, is to come together and say, "Let's, let's teach our kids coping skills," because we have an entire generation of kids right now who are in our schools, whose parents are drug users, who are alcohol abusers and who are incarcerated and who are being raised by grandparents. And we have all of these different things that are happening, and we have to be able to teach our kids how to handle that and function in our society, so that they can go on to be contributing citizens of our workforce and of our community.
Yeah.
That's going to make all of us better down the road. So I think that's kind of what I would start with, is how we do that. And it's not easy. As a new person going in, running for school board, I think I have to understand that it's not go in on the first day and all of these things are, are fixed. I mean, that's never going to happen. It is about creating opportunities for improvement, you know, periodically over the phase of many years. And it will take us a long time to address these kinds of cultural issues.
Absolutely.
And it's not just the school's responsibility to fix all of the cultural ills that are happening.
Yeah.
But certainly, we're a partner in that, and that's kind of what I see us doing.
Yeah. Well, Ronnie, obviously, you have a lot of thoughts, a lot of great ideas, and we appreciate you coming by to share those with us.
Thank you for having me.
At this time, I'm going to ask you to look into that camera.
Sure.
And give your, your final closing as to why people should vote for you.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you for having me here.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in.
I think part of, as you're out there and you're thinking about, "Who do I vote for in this school board election?" I hope that you'll consider me. I hope that you'll consider me. I hope that you'll look at my experience. I've had 24 years of experience in the field of education. I've dedicated many of those years into serving kids who have been marginalized, who are on the edge of our education system. And those are the kids, I think, that really need some and deserve some additional attention in our school system, not just in Franklin County, but across the state. So I hope that as you're making those decisions, you'll take those, that experience into account. I think you'll take my educational experience into account as well, and then also my passion for education. This is where I've dedicated my life, and I really want to bring that dedication to Franklin County Public Schools. So I hope that in addition to watching this program, you'll go to my Facebook page and just search Ronnie for School Board in your search bar, and it'll bring you to my school board page, where you can learn more information about me and about my candidacy, about my stance on issues and what I think is important for Franklin County Public Schools. I ask for your vote on November 6, and I look forward to serving you on the Franklin County School Board. Thank you.
Thank you so much--
Thank you.
--again for coming in. I know our viewers appreciate hearing from you. It's Ronnie Nolan, and he's running for the Franklin County School Board. Now, to our viewers, I want to remind you to get out and vote on Tuesday, November 6. Then go home and check us out on Channel 10. We'll be bringing you live election results straight from the county clerk's office. It's election season, folks, so it's time to get informed, voice your choice, and we'll see you next time on Meet the Candidates.